Okay, may I start the meeting?
Thank you. Good evening, good afternoon, I should say rather. Everyone, this is the second meeting in the month of February, February 16, 3:30. This is traditionally the business meeting, the Village Board of Trustees. We have a full agenda. We unfortunately missed our first meeting of the month due to the weather. And as always, the first matter at hand on the agenda is your approval of the minutes from the prior meeting of January 19th, 2021. So in reviewing these prior to our gathering today, are there any comments, suggestions, edits, or corrections from the board members?
Looks good to me.
We have a bid finally to award. We've been looking at our bathrooms on the main floor of Village Hall for quite some time. This is to award a bid to Carter Malens to make our bathrooms on the first floor ADA compliant, converting the restrooms into one stall each ADA compliant bathrooms. Joe, do you want to expand on that process a little bit for us?
Sure, so we unfortunately only received two bids. One from Carter Malens and one from FNF Concrete for this bid project. Carter Malens was the lowest responsible bidder that we received. This project, as you said, Mayor, is going to create a single occupant ADA bathrooms on the first floor of Village Hall. This project will be supplemented by grant money from both Suffolk County and the town of Brookhaven. Suffolk County, we have grant money of up to $39,000 and the town of Brookhaven, we have up to $50,000. When this project is completed, we do reconciliation and figure out what amount we will receive to go towards this project.
Great, thank you very much. This has been a project that's been difficult to get completed. I'm glad to see this advancing forward. After we award through the resolution today, what is your timeline? What do you think the timeline looks like for moving forward, please?
Because this is a project that requires federal guidelines or adherence to the federal guidelines. We're working with the town of Brookhaven in order to finalize all the documentation with them. So there is some documentation that Carter Malens has to submit. They were waiting until we actually awarded this contract to them. So immediately after this meeting or early tomorrow morning, I will send over a copy of the minutes showing that it was approved. And we will get that documentation moving forward. We will then have a kickoff meeting with the company. We'll establish a timeframe as to how long it's going to take for them to complete this project. And that's basically it.
Okay, so a month? You know me, I always like the nutshell version, a month or so.
I can't say how long it's going to take. I can certainly tell you after we have our kickoff meeting with them.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And I will provide that information at a later date.
Thank you so much. Sorry to press you there. Okay, so we have, we did finalize the negotiations on the collective bargaining unit with the Code Bureau. As with our main CSEA contract for the, our other contract with our other employees. There is an agreement that we give the same percentage increase to the administrative staff. We usually do this as part of our budget, correct Denise, with the main contract moving forward each year. But because this agreement was just agreed to a couple of meetings ago, that's why our resolution number three is on the board to take care of the administrative team at the Code Bureau. We have some changes up at the DPW. We had our mechanic Joe Fenton retire. We're keeping that position, but we're sliding Mr. Mann over from Labor Crew Leader into that position as mechanic three, effective immediately. Steve's been extremely helpful with keeping many of the heavy equipment vehicles and equipment up and running up at the DPW. So we're happy to see him agree to taking that position. And then number five is to replace then the loss of that particular laborer in that department with moving Mr. Davis Rodriguez from Custodian One up to the DPW as a laborer one. And we are coordinating the loss of Davis at the community center. You know, losing that position there where Joe's working with Renee and the crew at the Village Center to figure out how to plug that hole. But this is all in full agreement with Mr. Gallagher at the DPW and we all know he needs the manpower. With that, and all the snow that we've been moving around here in the month of February, we were proactive in extending our snow agreement with the Business Improvement District through the 21-22 season, which is into next year. Just so that the general public knows and the board members know, the agreement with bid calls for the call out of Fred and Holmes to clear our sidewalks. Bid in the village rent to Bobcats and Mr. Holmes provides the manpower and the salt. And we take the first pass at clearing sidewalks. Both the village-owned sidewalks and the sidewalks in front of all of the commercial businesses in the C1 and C2 district. The bid, Business Improvement District pays the first $30,000 in that overall expense. This year, we are very near that total at this time, if not Denise, are we up to 30 or we're really approaching 30,000 at this point? On the bid sidewalk, I think we're in the high twenties, can we say? And you're on mute?
On mute Denise?
You're still on mute?
Oh yeah, we're up there.
Yeah, we're approaching that cap, so we want to be mindful. Again, I believe that there is a total accumulation of snow that is required before they're called out. And this is just a reminder to all the people who own property down here in the village. If you are located in the Business Improvement District and there's a sidewalk in front of your property or there's a sidewalk in front of your property, you are responsible for the clearing of that snow and the maintaining of that sidewalk after the snow is cleared. So again, this agreement that we have with bid is because those properties that are within the bid district pay an additional tax to the Business Improvement District. So that comes from the tax bill, that contribution of 30,000 comes from their separate tax bill. But ultimately, the responsibility rests on the property owner to clear the snow from your sidewalk.
Mayor, just to clarify on that, that's not just those in the business district, correct? It's throughout the village, any resident is responsible for their own sidewalk, correct?
That's correct. So whether you're located within the bid or you have a sidewalk in front of your dwelling or home or property, you're responsible for that sidewalk in front of your property. If you're within the Business Improvement District, you know, that bid tax helps pay for this snow removal agreement that we do down in the C1 and C2 districts. The purpose of that is to make sure that we can get our village open for business as soon as possible. So people can go to the bank and the post office and get their local merchant, the grocer, you know. That's the underlying purpose of that. We have two parking initiatives here. Kathy Ann, I'll let you end, or Kevin, who is hosting this meeting, expand on these. The first involves a new technology to implement at the Barnum parking lot. It is actually a counting system that will indicate on the signage, the gateway signage of that parking lot, how many spaces are open for parking. And Kevin or Kathy Ann, I'll go to Kathy Ann first, and Kevin, how do you guys want to talk about that a little bit more?
Kevin's better off to answer the technical part of it. I think it's a great pilot program to test out in this new lot. It's going to prevent people from having to enter the lot, go around multiple times to see that there are no spots. They'll look at the sign, they'll know what's available and either move on or be able to enter. I think it's also going to help alleviate the in and out traffic into that lot in that area, which I think will be fantastic. And if it works there, you know, that's something that we can look forward to in other lots moving forward. Kevin, maybe you can comment on how it actually works?
Just in terms of the technology itself, there are several different ways to count cars. One of the, could be an easier way is not the most efficient way. It's not the most secure way, which is cameras, which are subject to the kind of weather we're having and that type of thing. So this has been tried, true, and tested in places like Disney and major places that utilize this technology. So I thought this was the best way to go with this.
One of the things I thought was because this lot is, you know, on the fringes of where, you know, people want to park right by a building, a visitor might see that there's an opening in this lot and pull right in instead of trying to hunt and peck. And our goal is to try and fill up these parking lots on the fringes first so we can leave the prime parking for patrons of the stores and restaurants. So we'll probably discuss more of the overall management of that parking lot as we get closer to the spring and the opening of that parking lot as well. Yes?
Just quickly, this is a very good idea. This can be implemented throughout the system. We're going to be having LED lighting throughout the system, but also with an internet Wi-Fi connection. And people visiting Port Jefferson, including Port Jefferson residents, can look on an app and determine where a space would be available, which might help reduce some of the circling that people do during peak business hours of the summertime visiting the tourist locations and restaurants.
Kevin, do you want to further comment on that or?
Bruce is exactly right, both from an app point of view before you get to town, but also real time, I think, is where we are. To be able to see constantly, by the way, that there, hopefully our space is available. I think that'll drive people, first of all, this is a new lot. A lot of people won't know that at the beginning. So I think it'll help promote the new lot.
And just to further, this is a one-time cost of almost $10,000 to manage this lot. And that's to actually purchase the technology, get everything set up, and there's no ongoing cost. So again, this is a pilot to see if it works. We can then start pricing out the cost to implement throughout the village, the rest of the lots, and see if the technology actually is helpful. And that links me to the next initiative on the agenda here, which is also the implementation of some new technology in the parking code enforcement, and then it translates into more efficiency up into the courts. Kevin, you want to talk a little bit about this one?
Yeah, so for the first time for the village, we're able to integrate courts. Well, it starts with parking, as you know, when a session is invoked. It's been challenging, very challenging for enforcement to now go to two other devices to hopefully get information about that session. This will connect from parking to enforcement on one device, by the way, with a built-in printer with proven technology. You might remember I went out to Allentown and saw this technology working for a much, much bigger marketplace than where we are. And then right on through to courts. So this implementation, we're going to start very, you know, very small in our endeavor and just get one handheld. Make sure the cloud, the system works correctly. It does what it's supposed to do, and then we can grow from there. But it does tie all three departments together very nicely.
And well, the device that we're getting on this first initial pilot, will that also have a license plate reader?
Yes, there'll be three licenses plus a license plate reader. So that information is transposed, I should say, real time. It's very important that the information that happens at that ticket writing or that inquisition of, you know, if somebody parked legally, so to speak, that's happening real time to the cloud. And so the chief of code could, can also monitor these things for the first time, real time, not next day or next month. In some cases, not able to monitor anything. It's a real leap for us. It will more than pay for itself, I should say, too, more than pay for itself.
Good. I love it. And I know you met with, you know, Director of the Courts, the clerks there, Elizabeth you've been working hard with, and Denise in the Treasurer's Office, and Fred, of course, in the Code Bureau. So appreciate your, you know, getting everybody working together and getting that new technology implemented. Our goal is to have that fully in session by the fall, implementing it as soon as possible, but not taking, not losing the other system until we're ready to go, to launch 100%, correct?
Correct. My goal would be getting this working by April 1st, if, you know, a good part of it. It's a big goal. Yeah.
Go Kevin, go, go, go. We have our first application for one of our favorite Village events sponsored by the Port Jefferson Chamber of Commerce for the annual Dragon Boat Festival to be held in September. I like seeing this application because this application means there is hope for our future and trying to get back to some sense of normalcy here to have events in our park. The application is complete, correct Barbara? And the fee is included?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't, I don't think we've had any other objections. We've had some things to work out with the chamber, but they've been fully cooperative in years past. So I don't think that this should be, this will of course be subject to any COVID guidelines that are in place. And obviously, updates to be given as that date line approaches. Number 11 is, I guess, housekeeping. Whoop, I skipped. I'm sorry, I skipped number 10. I apologize. Stan, this is part of, you know, your ongoing maintenance for opening up the country club.
Yeah, we've been using Bustamani now for years. He's low bidder and he does the best work. And he comes in in the early spring, March, late March, puts all of our courts in shape to open up.
And then just make sure, please, that when everything goes up to Treasury, they have all the backup documents so that they, you know, Dave can approve this, the warrant moving forward.
Gotcha.
We're setting a public hearing for March 1. This is a procedure we go through every year to give the Board of Trustees the ability to pierce the tax cap if in fact that has to be done. Is that correct Barbara? That's the intent of this public hearing for March 1?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's procedural. We are in the, we will be doing a budget work session, I hope, this Thursday, whether permitting. If not, we may move to this kind of a platform and working with the Treasurer's Office on approving our budget. And do we have a date for a budget hearing? Is that going to be second week of March or April? Do you guys have an idea when that's going to be held? Denise, at this time?
I think we're going to have it at the first April board meeting, correct Denise?
Yes, April 5th. My mouse died, so I can't do it.
You need batteries. April 5th, oh, that's not a fun day to have a hearing.
Oh, it's your birthday!
Somebody's going to be turning 57. We're going to need 57 candles. Okay, here we go. We had a great work session this past Friday for a couple of hours. Thank you for those who attended. Bruce attended virtually. He had some challenges being in the conference room with us at certain times. But we had brought Mr. Egan with us, our members from the Building and Planning Department, the Board of Trustees, talking about uptown, what it's looking like now, what it's going to look like in the future, and what else can we be doing as the board who, you know, writes code and legislation to help more of the development that's hoping to come. So one initiative, it's a very small one, but I think it will have impact, is to set up a public hearing on March 15th for a new section of code to be implemented. And it talks about regulating vacant buildings and storefronts. But really, if you look to the villages of East Hampton and Southampton, they have a code in place that requires a vacant building to display artwork in their windows. And we are going to be looking to implement that same code. Several of our code enforcement employees, as well as our building employers, are getting trained on state code right now. And when they come out of those training sessions fully enforced to write under state law, we're going to be rolling out a plan to get those buildings looking a hell of a lot better than they are right now. And any building that's vacant in the village of Port Jefferson, but with a particular eye on many of the storefronts in Upper Port. I'll report a little bit more on Uptown in my report after these resolutions here.
Guests are here.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was yelling, I was yelling over to my husband. I thought I was on mute, but sorry. Managing business and...
Somebody's coming for dinner. They're here already.
Your official announcement.
Rebecca, we have a proposal from Brian McMillan and spearheaded by Trustee Louts to have a new trainer come into the rooms down at the country club. Stan, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, you have a piece of paper in front of you there that explains it fairly well. But we're trying to develop a multi, more use for the downstairs across the road. We're marketing lockers. In order to mark lockers, we need to have some kind of locker service. So this group came to us. They want to rent the room downstairs that Inspire used to be in. They will also provide additional services for us down there. They're going to do walkthrough for the locker room cleanups. They're going to supervise the weight room. They're going to make sure the weight room is sanitized. So it's kind of a multipurpose arrangement that we're going to make with these people. I see here, I know Brian has to just somehow draw up an agreement for us. Pretty much along the same, yeah, pretty much along the same lines we had for Inspire.
All that's in addition to providing services for physical fitness instruction, correct?
Oh, yes, it is.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, they're going to provide the towel service, amenity service. Make sure that the towel racks are filled, cleaned, distributed. As I said, sanitize the weight room so that we can get that room open. Right now, the room has been closed. We've had no one down there. We've had, membership is very eager to get into that room. We spent a lot of money. The village spent money. Beautiful room, unused, and this is going to open it up. We'd like to start March 1st, if we can get this all together by then.
Good. That's great, yeah, because I know that people were interested in getting into that room and it was pretty much an oversight issue for us. So I'm glad to see this is resolved. That's excellent. And thanks, Joe and Barb, for ironing out any other issues that may have come up, if any. With that, we just have the warrants to approve. I had the opportunity to review all. On the warrants from the February 1st, there were some questions concerning some of the, you know, the trucks and things. I think we have an idea of what we need to do moving forward. And I think the warrants from today are in good order, Denise.
Yeah.
Stan?
Do we want to do anything with the emergency repair at the tennis courts tonight or today?
So we have some fencing and some, that needs to be stabilized up at the country club. We have two estimates. One is from a company on the, is it the town list or the county list?
Suffolk County, county, county list.
Okay, but there's a discrepancy in the number of poles that they're recommending. Do we, do we want to approve not to exceed the high bidder and work from there down?
Yeah, I just don't understand. I'm not sure about the difference. Go ahead, Joe.
I have to look at the proposals again to look at the concern that Stan had raised. The county bidder came in lower than the other bidder came in. So I'm not sure what the discrepancy is. I didn't understand completely what Stan's email was referring to. So I have to go back and look at the two proposals. But the county bidder, or I should say, the county contractor, the one that has been vetted through Suffolk County and has the contract with Suffolk County, did come in lower than the other bid that we received by, in excess of $3,000.
Right, but the county bidder, it was only recommending, I believe it was 11 posts versus the other bid, which was recommending 15 posts. So again, if the number of posts is greater than 11, that's why I'm recommending, because we want to stabilize this fence line sooner than later. The Board of Trustees tonight can approve for that work to be done, no greater than the higher bidder. At, what was the high bid number, 14 and change?
Yes.
That way, that way you can advance the project and a resolution will not hold you up.
Okay.
All right, so I guess add to the resolution items, Barbara, tonight. Work to be performed to repair the northern fence line at the Port Jeff Country Club for the upper courts, for work to be done, not to exceed 14,000, what was it, 900?
14,475.
Not to exceed 14,475.
Kind of inquiry, where are those funds coming from?
So they're more than likely come from the country club capital, but we have to designate those funds. They could be coming from the beach capital, because this is regarding the bluff line that we're dealing with and the erosion, the coastal erosion issue that we're having. So maybe it's coming out of shared funds. We're not quite sure. But the funds, we will find the funds. We can't afford to lose this fence line at this point in time.
I just know, I saw the photos and, you know, visited the, I've seen the site from up and below. It's, is this, I'm just trying to get a better idea of what the work is that's being done. Are we just keeping people from going to that corner? Or are we trying, are we putting fence where it's going to fall off?
Well, we're going to fence off both ends, so no one can go back behind that fence. That's number one. Number two, the erosion problems we're having now are the anchors, the 45-degree pipes that go down. Many of them are loose and they're hanging loose. They will be removed. And then the only way we can remove them and still stabilize the fence is to put in a heavier post. So the plan is in between each three-inch post in the zone that is really in bad shape is to put in a four-inch post between each three-inch post. Therefore, we will no longer need those braces. We do not intend to remove the foundations for those braces, because if we do, we're going to be tinkering with erosion on the bluff. Because right now, a lot of them are right next to the edge of the bluff. That's the plan.
Okay, I might, I might be missing a document. Did we get a sketch?
Yeah, so, yeah, this was not, we didn't have the documents available like we do with all the other resolutions, because this just came in today. So if you want to visit with Joe down at Village Hall, Rebecca, and take a look. We're only doing this because we don't want to wait another two weeks before we reinforce the fence line.
Sure, I completely understand that. I'm just, I guess my nervousness comes from the worry of just dropping $14,000 down the bluff line. Again, because I know that, like, the edge of the tennis court is almost looking like it's about to fall. And the, there's been talk of worry about even the use of that court. So just looking at sort of spending money in a way that's going to... Yeah, we want to make things safe and we want to do things quickly if people are not safe right now. But just looking at sort of the, beyond the immediate.
Well, this will ensure that there is a season this year for our tennis membership. And that's why these two fencing companies went there to look at what can be done. You know, this is not obviously a long-term solution. We need to keep pressing DEC to get our permit, obviously, to stabilize the bluff. But this is a way of preventing, you know, the, right now, the fence is very high. So the height of the fence is what's catching wind and not helping. So the proposal talks about shortening the height and reinforcing to help stabilize, which may help actually everything stay intact a little bit more. So...
Yeah, I failed to mention, we're going to take off the top four feet of this fence. This fence is 14 feet high. The top four feet is a separate section that will be taken off. My concern is, and I think, Joe, you should be checking on this, do we need 15 poles or 11 poles? What we were going to do from Court One down to the end of the facility is to put one pole between every three-inch pole, and that came up to 15 poles. So I don't know that 11 poles would suffice. I'm not sure. I'm not an expert in it, but I would recommend that, once this is done, we may not be using wind screens.
So again, I think Rebecca, these are good questions. I don't disagree with your concerns by any stretch. At this point, I don't think we have too many options. But this option does give us the ability to keep Courts Three and Four in play, at least, you know, throughout some part of the season, if not at all, all during the season. And hopefully, it will help secure, you know, and prevent any, right now, some of the poles are pulling earth up and out. So that need, those poles need to come out, and the poles that are further in need to be stabilized a little bit more. But it's not, it's not ideal by any stretch, but we can't just sit here and let the whole thing go.
No, sure. I'm just maybe looking at where the funding is coming from. If it's, you know, if there's funds coming in from tennis membership and that's what's going to fund keeping the tennis courts open, that seems sensible to me.
And then we really, you know, we really need to see, you know, again, help get pressure on DEC, find out when I'm going to get these permits. Hopefully, that hard work is in play, you know, at the same time of year that the beach, you know, we got all the sand. That's when heavy construction happens. We're really hoping to see that work maybe get done this winter. So we're looking at stabilizing that bluff, but I mean... But I mean, I know everything that they needed from us has been fully submitted now. The sand is in place, and hopefully, that's the next pressure point. Because otherwise, yeah, next year, we're looking at another plan. But thank you. Good questions, guys, good, good, healthy discussion. So did we get number, I know, what was that number?
That was Resolution 15, yep, I have it.
Okay, all right. So are there any other action items that I'm missing here today? A lot of work being done here, folks, I appreciate all the departments. All right, then to make a motion to approve 1 through 15?
Just point of clarification, since we don't have the resolution in front of us, and I don't mean to be harping on it. Is it possible, just to clarify where, where that funding is, you know, the funding can be internal from the country club for the fencing, or is that?
Well, I, I
I believe it can be.
Okay.
So, okay, so I'll say, country club capital.
Great, thank you.
So Barbara, can you read that resolution back to me?
Sure. Approval for work to be performed to repair the northern fence line at the Port Jeff Country Club at the upper courts at a cost not to exceed $14,475 paid from country club capital.
Sounds good. Okay, so a motion to approve 1 through 15. Second by Kathy Anne's trustee Snaden, quick on the trigger, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, great job, guys. A lot of, a lot of work in between, despite all the other things that have gone on in the last two weeks. Some of those things, starting with an S and ending with a W. Okay. Just real quick, great, great work session on Uptown. I, I believe our building and planning department, last Thursday night, gave the Conifer Project their site plan approval. The resolution, I think, is a seven or eight-page-long document. The building permit will be issued more than likely this week. I know they're working on just finalizing some of the displays and the prints for signature. I've signed everything I've needed to sign, thank you, Mr. Egan. And with that, you know, Conifer, their building permit also includes a demolition permit, according to the Director of Building and Planning. We think that those buildings north of the train tracks on the right-hand side, we should be seeing them coming down during the month of April at some point in time and construction commencing uptown. Fantastic news for this community, a very important shovel to go into the ground there. We know that Conifer is also exploring whether or not they can put yet another project up in our uptown, uptown revitalization area. And we have another project that's undergoing a process in the building and planning on the North Country Road and Upper Sheep pasture, Main Street corner. We are looking to set another work session with a, another interested developer who's looking to develop, develop the east, I'm sorry, the west side of the street as you're approaching, which is a more difficult section of Upper Port, because the parcels there are much smaller and shallower. So these are some of the things that the board trustees discussed. We will be meeting with that potential developer and his architect, either the, I think I gave Friday the 26th or March 5th of, you know, last, last Friday of February, the first Friday of March, to see if we can look at some of the challenges that people are facing on the, on the west side of the street. So Uptown continues to be on our forefront. We also discussed some other issues impacting Uptown, such as the Six Acre Parcel and, you know, the exploratory work that the Community Gardens Committee is doing. And Rebecca, we're going to have to schedule for you folks to, to spend some time with us presenting. And I'm sure that's going to be part of your report today. As far as code initiatives, you'll see a hearing coming up for that new code about forcing people to hang artwork in their windows. We're looking at probably including some other code initiatives as a result of these workshops that we're having with Upper Port. I do want to commend our Chief of Code, the Deputy Chief Johnny Barrero, who's been with the Village of Port Jefferson for over 40 years, gave a nice commemorative letter to Fred Lute, our chief. It's a letter of commendation saying he's the, it's, it's, it's an adorable letter. I'm going to frame it and hang it in my office, because it's like, this is the best chief we've ever had. In my 40 years of being here, the department's working great together, well-oiled machine. He cares for everybody, so it's really nice to see your own department giving you that level of recognition. And then I also just wanted to congratulate Sierra, who is the Code Officer of the Month. She's one of our female code officers, she does a fantastic job.
Code Officer of the Year.
Oh, I thought it was the month, it's the year? Oh, the year, even better. That, she always has a great disposition. She's all business, but she has a great disposition. She's eager to help, and she's got a great customer service approach. So congratulations to Sierra, I always say her name improperly. Snow clearing, guys, I just want to say, listen, our Department of Public Works is really killing it out there. You know, they had, we had a really tough event. We had that big snowstorm come in, I think it was a lot of snow over a long time. You know, a lot of residents had some issues the next morning. Please Know is not the department's intention to block in your driveways. It is their intention to remove snow from our streets. And sometimes it gets, you know, goes back into the top of your driveway. Apologize for that, but, you know, these guys are working really hard, they're working very, very long hours. And we had, that next morning, we found out we had some glitches with our computer services. So everything's been hammered out. We lost a lot of vehicles, a lot of vehicles are down for repair, but they, they bounced back and they hit this second event that we had really, really, in a very expeditious manner, that was a more, a lighter snow, not as much. We got our first responders to work, we got our schools open. They did a great job, and I, I know that, we know that, because we've heard about some other areas that didn't do such a great job. So I just really wanted to thank Steve Gallagher, who's the Chief of the Department of Public Works, the entire crew there, Dave Melios, who's the Director of Parks and his crew, because they always go out and do snow plowing. We had John Van Gelder, we had Davis, we had Tony even from the Building and Planning Department out there in a snowplow truck. So thank you, guys, and also thank you to the Code Enforcement Bureau, who's out there helping to keep streets closed down. Just know, folks, that when the mayor calls a snow emergency, that means that you're not allowed to park on the streets that are labeled as emergency streets in our code. We'll be listing them up on our website, so you can see which streets those are. And again, if there's this quirky thing in New York State law that says that, God forbid, our snowplow hits something that's in the street, whether it might be a mailbox, that's actually, you think is on your property, but it's in that public right-of-way, or a car even that's on the street. You know, the village doesn't have liability. We're taking all your names and numbers, and we're putting them through insurance just to see if we can actually help you. And we'll be making some determinations to what level we may be able to provide you with assistance. But just please beware, put little orange flags around things if you need to, but it is not our intention to go out there and, you know, make life worse than it is. I just want to thank the Conservancy, which is the fundraising arm of this village. We have an archive room up in the Village Center where we digitize and store historical records. And we've made a lot of really great historical displays, and we use a oversized printer to create all those visuals, also all of our village posters and things that we do now internally for marketing. After 14 years of hard work, that little printer went kaput, and the Conservancy was gracious enough to come up with almost $5,000 in donation to the Village of Port Jefferson during fiscally very difficult times, I might add. And we were able to go out and replace that printer with a very timely manner. The printer was up and running, I visited archive room on Saturday with Barbara and visited our historian up there, who's printing historical maps, and we are back in business. So a big shout out to the Conservancy, thank you for your help, and please support the Conservancy. They help us with our parks, when we had to redo Rocketship Park with the Treasure Your Parks campaign. They're really a great group of people, they work hard for us, and they keep us in business. To that end, guys, if there's any other not-for-profits out there that you're hoping to have your event, please call your date into Village Hall, Barbara Sakovich. We are putting together the global calendar, we are hopeful to see some of our traditional events back up and running this year as we try and come out of this pandemic and spring back strong into spring and hopefully a, a good and active summer into fall. With that, I'm passing the microphone to Deputy Mayor Stan Laues.
Thank you, Margot. I have quite a bit to report here from the Village Center and the Recreation Department. Right now, we're registering anyone for our summer camps. You can register online, beginning on March 1st. All of the different camps are listed on our website. You can go to portjeff.com, you click on Recreation, and we have a total list of all of the programs we're going to be running this summer. We're also looking for camp counselors and lifeguards at this time. If you have any children or friends who have children, who are looking for jobs for the summer, camp counseling and lifeguarding jobs are being promoted right now. The ice skating at the center will run until March 15th. The ice skating so far this year has contributed almost $60,000 towards our village budget with just about a month to go, so it's, it's a nice fundraising. The North Shore Art Guild is presenting an exhibit called Reawakenings. It's on the second floor at the center right now, it's worth a visit. We have scheduled our mid-winter youth camp, which started, by the way, today. If you're still interested, you can still get into that, you can register for that. News from the Parks Department for the upcoming season. We're going to have 140 kayak racks available for your kayaks, canoes, and paddle boards. We've had brand-new racks at Crystal Brook, an additional 18 down there. We're refurbishing all the racks at Centennial and at the East Beach. Residents that are interested in spaces for your vessels, you're going to need to fill out applications, Barbara, I don't know if we're ready for that yet.
March 1st on the website, portjeff.com.
Okay, great, great, great. So we're, we're going to have to be assigning racks again, probably, in a lottery. Hopefully, as we continue to expand the numbers of racks we have, we'll be able to offer a rack for everyone who wants one. So far, we haven't been able to do that, but we're working towards that end. Some news from the country club. Our scheduled opening dates at the country club right now are April 1st for golf and April 15th for tennis. I want to remind those that have not signed up that there's going to be another price increase on March 15th. So if you have not signed up, or you do not have an application, the membership office is open Tuesday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:30. It's also open Saturday morning from 8:30 until 12:30. Right now, the golf memberships stands at 358 members. We've just started to post the tennis membership, so I don't have a number for you there, but the tennis membership is also quite healthy. We have installed a new software at the club that I'm sure all of our golf members and our tennis members are going to be extremely happy with. It's very user-friendly, and it's going to be much more equitable in making reservations for our members to play golf. You will shortly be receiving instructions on how to use this system. It's quite easy, I'm sure you'll catch on real quick. We're presently hiring and organizing staffs for both sides of the road. We're going to be expanding the staffing hours at the tennis office. We're going to be adding some starters and rangers for the golf during busy times this summer. You will notice that we have expanded, once the snow is gone, you won't see it now, but, yeah, we have expanded the driving range. Steve Gallagher and his crew came in and they moved the berm up along the right-hand side of our driving range. It's been graded, and it's, it's going to be a major improvement up there. One last thing, we're trying to establish a hole-in-one club. Once the course is opened and you get out there, you'll notice that on hole number 10, I'm sorry, hole number 11, par three, we have made a little patio, and the patio is made out of pavers. And our plan is to have those pavers, we're going to sell those pavers to those people that have made hole-in-one on that hole. Hopefully, we'll make enough money off of this project, same way we did with our main patio by the scoreboard. We'll make enough money that we can have hole-in-one club on all par three holes up at the club. So that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Stan, very comprehensive, good update. Bruce Miller, Mr. Miller?
I'm mute.
Bruce, you're on mute, unmute.
Sorry about that. I thought I've, I have been working on electrification with the Sierra Club. We have spoken, they have been speaking to local legislators. There's not that much to report on that. The Steve Engelbreit plan would provide for moving the railroad terminus, the station farther west onto that Lawrence Aviation property, the Suffolk County has indicated that they're getting close to resolving that. There's a lot of formalities in that regard. Also, just, I, I had put on the agenda, but it's not, actually not for me, it's for Brian. Brian, where are we with the Nassau County settlement on, on the LIPA funding?
So it's a good question, the, I don't know where LIPA, I don't have any visibility as to where they are, LIPA with Nassau County, you know, they play that kind of close to the vest, but only we get to see what they read in Newsday. The only one that's tied to it is Huntington's. And I, I'm going to give a more comprehensive report, once all the issues have been hammered out. The only issue that's still out is the supplemental payment from the beginning that Huntington negotiated. But I will say that I do have the comparisons of the Huntington to our glide path percentages, and I don't think it would be a surprise to anybody here to say it is not a dramatic difference.
Okay, all right.
But I'll, I'll definitely have, I, I was emailing with the Chief Counsel for LIPA today, as a matter of fact, to try to hammer down that second part. But I probably would suspect in the next two, two meetings, we'll have, I'll, I'll, we'll have this done, and I'll be able to give a more comprehensive report, but we're getting there. But it's not going to be Huntington held out for something that's not as dramatically different than what we already have. I can say that.
Thank you. That concludes my report, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, thank you, Bruce. Trustee Snaden, Kathy Anne, please.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. The parking department is considering permanent pickup spots on Main Street. We've been looking into that, speaking to businesses. There have been requests from certain restaurants to have a permanent, you know, 15-minute allotted time spot in front of their businesses, so we're, we're looking into that. I'm trying to speak to each individual business, I'm not trying to, I am speaking to each individual business to try to find out what each business needs and wants, what is their wish list as we move into the spring season, outdoor dining season, still amid COVID. When we threw together our parking, our parking and our outdoor dining, which go hand in hand. Last year, we did it quickly, and I think the village did a great job with, with the resources they had at the time. But moving into spring, we're realizing more and more that each business is very individual, based on their geographical location, what their parking looks like currently, and what their outdoor space looks like. So instead of a one-size-fits-all, I would really like to tailor, you know, do what we can for each business based on, on their needs and requirements. So I'm in the process of working on that. It's also for parking, the meters will be going on as of April 15th in, in all of the lots. The bicycle task force, the bicycle issue that we've had throughout the village in previous seasons, we are, are trying to get a head start on making sure we have all of our ducks in a row in having open communication with the business district and the residents to make sure we are on top of this issue as we move into the open season. So our task force consists of myself, our Chief Code, Fred Lute, as well as Richard Harris. And we will be meeting, again, we met once with the business owners and the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll continue doing that as we head into the, the open season. and we'll continue doing that as we head into the open season. The Zoning Board of Appeals, during our last hearing, was approved a variance for a side yard setback and street frontage on Thompson Street. And the next meeting is on February 25th at 6:00 PM with regard to an application for a use variance at the address of 1213 Main Street. Again, that's February 25th. The ARC, we have sent forward the recommendations and comments to the Planning Board with regard to the Ferry Building on East Broadway. The Planning Board said that our comments really enhance the building's look and feel, so we're happy about that, that they really like the suggestions that we made. And updating, the architects will be updating and working on a final submission for the Building Department for that building that's coming forth hopefully soon. We have another meeting scheduled to look at some materials that they would be providing to show us what they will be using in that project. Courts are still not in session, we're waiting to hear more on that. I don't know if Brian has any more information on, no, nothing.
Yeah, we're still, yeah, thanks, no, we're still, we're in normal contact with the Chief Judge who supervises the Town and Village Justice Courts. And, you know, the courts are limping through their procedures, just as everything else, on whether, what's going to be open and planning on spacing and distance and those kind of things. So, it's slow-going, but it's developing by the week, I should say.
I'm hoping that we just get an email that says, guess what, you're open. Which we very well could.
Maybe.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Brian. The school district is back in that, well, we're off this week, but everybody's in full-time. Full-time is, middle school and high school is four days. They still have the Mondays for makeup day and ketchup day. And elementary school remains full-time. They still have a staggered bus schedule, but that's going to go back to a one-route schedule as of the middle of March. So, we're happy to see that that's starting to get more normal. Sports is going to be, it is opening up, the winter sports and the spring sports. Spring, I know tennis starts March 1st, so we're looking forward to that. We're also, I'm working with Richard Harris on allowing children in the schools to get community service hours for snow removal. So, we, the mayor touched on the fact that people have to be responsible for their sidewalks and snow removal. And there are some community members that, you know, aren't physically able to do that or, you know, financially able to do that. So, if that's the case, we'd like them to reach out to us and we are partnering with the school and their community service department to allow students to do that shoveling and help the community and gain their community service hours that they need to graduate. So, I'm pretty happy about that project. And then, as far as marketing with the village, we're starting a Be in the Know campaign. You might have seen that go out on social media. There's going to be a newsletter coming forward. You can sign up for that right on our website on the front page. There's a button there and all we need is your name and email address and you'll be getting this new and improved newsletter with all kinds of good information that will be sent right to your inbox. So, I encourage everyone to go there and sign up because you don't want to be without that information. Everybody's going to be in the know. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Kathy Ann, thanks for all your hard work. Rebecca, are the guests here yet? No, kidding.
Very good, yeah, I was going to start my report by saying you already, my guests are here.
We're registered.
I apologize again for anyone who doesn't, I run a bed and breakfast and that was my Zoom fail, not as bad as I am not a cat, but anyway, very good. So, to pick up on what Trustee Sneedon was reporting on with the, I'll start with the, not on the agenda item, with the planning report. The Planning Board had a very thorough and long meeting on the 11th and with the building on 116 West Broadway, which is that Ferry Building that the ARC did a really great job on. They are hoping to be resubmitting those plans with, before the next Planning Board meeting in order to reach resolution by this, you know, at the next meeting. So, that is the timeline there. Also, at that meeting, more discussion about One North Country Road, which is the former Lobster House. It is, the project has gone from, I forget how many apartments previously, but fewer apartments, so now 36 apartments. It has all its required parking and is currently an as-of-right project, but is still working on, with the Planning Board, to try to address the massing of the building so that coming up the hill on Main Street on the left, it's not a very imposing-looking building there. But we're very excited to be working with the GITO group because, you know, their buildings are always lovely and wonderful there and they're great to work with.
Rebecca, can I just jump in with a quick question there? How many apartments did you say they're looking at currently?
36 apartments currently, which is a decrease from the previous, and I'll get you that number, if you want me to follow up, I can send you.
That's okay. Do you know how many one-bedroom versus two?
No, they didn't give that on this schematic or at that meeting, but I'm sure they have it. And again, send me an email if you like that and I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
The Planning Board reviewed the renewal permit for the ransom in Bed and Breakfast, another lovely B&amp;B in the area. I wonder if their guests have arrived yet today. And recommended for renewal, so we can expect that to come in from the Board of, to the Board of Trustees soon. The Planning Board made comments on something that's not quite in the village of Port Jefferson, but on Jamaica Avenue, which is just past our sort of light industrial area towards, to the east. And there's a battery array going in over there. And so, the Planning Board made some, had some questions, made recommendations as Brookhaven reviews that. On, to do, there was some discussion about 170 North Country Road as far as land banking parking spaces and working on that project. And discussion about a flag lot approval, which had gone to the zoning board, got approved and came back. So, they are now being referred to SECR. And the mayor gave the update on Conifer Station Street Project, which yes, is working on, you know, hopefully, like the mayor said this week, getting its permit, which is very, very exciting. Also, very exciting is a project that I'm working to bring to the village, something that myself as a consistent beach walker would love to see and I'm excited to, will be happy to see. There's always rubbish on the beach, there's plastic, there's, you know, things that either blow onto the beach or are washed up on shore and a lot of it's accidental. Sometimes people decide to leave their trash on the beach, whichever it is. You know, we as individuals can be empowered to do sort of passive beach cleanups other than the great ones that the coastal steward does a couple of times a year. And so, I went and researched how can we keep our beaches cleaner here? And one thing I found is, spreading across Long Island are these baskets on the beach. And so, these baskets, it's a little, very small stand that can get set up. I worked with Trustee Laux to look at the Centennial Park location. We can actually put the stand right on the kayak racks and we're looking at putting them also at East Beach and West Beach. So, it's essentially just a little stand that holds baskets, like the ones that, instead of taking a shopping cart, if you're just getting a couple of items at the grocery store, the little plastic or metal baskets. And so, it would just be the holder, the baskets, and a little sign that explains that if you're going for a walk on the beach, to go ahead and think of taking one of these baskets and picking up some trash that you find along the way and depositing it in an already-existing trash can on the way back. I've talked to Southampton, who has these, Riverhead Township has these, and they've found great success already in having these on their beaches. They found that the beaches are cleaner, there's not a lot of disappearing baskets and that the residents really appreciate being empowered to do something because often I myself will go for a walk on the beach and get like, I don't know, 50, 100 feet out, see trash and then kick myself for not bringing some kind of receptacle to pick it up with, but I'm too lazy to go back because I'm a human. And so, having these baskets is a prompt to be able to help people do that. We're already working with folks from Relic Clothing Company, who helped Riverhead Township and Southampton Township get theirs. And as far as community service for the youth goes, I'm hoping to work with Trustee Sneedon on helping the school district hook up with this and be able to record the community service for youth who do this as well. So, that's another great opportunity. So, that's coming down the pike and we'll have visuals and whatnot and timeline on that sooner than later. The Conservation Advisory Committee is furthering their discussion on tree code and looking at the application for permitting of the cutting down of trees just to try to close any potential loopholes, you know, that might be accessed when folks want to take down more trees. You know, what the CAC is finding and the Building Department is finding over time is perhaps, you know, there might have been too many instances where our code allows for blighted trees to be taken down in a greater number. And there's been really interesting blights that only exist on one plot, which as an ecologist, I can say that that's not how blights work. So, we're looking on how to fix that part of the code. And that is going to continue and probably come to the Board soon. And then, as far as the community garden goes, we are, between this week and next week, working on pro and con and information sheets for all of the three sites that we've narrowed our search down to. It is, the beat, there's a location on Beach Street, a location on Rosner, which is near Rocketship Park and the basketball courts there. That would be in conjunction, just a small community garden in conjunction with the Children's Garden that is planned to go in there already. And then, the third location is part of the six acres of Highland Park, Parkland in the Uptown area. So, the Board can expect a very thorough presentation sooner than later on all of that. You know, whether it's, you know, one, the other, or some combination they're in. But the committee is working incredibly well and I thank them all for their enthusiasm and dedication to this project.
Thank you, Rebecca. Can you also get for me a status from Campani, Francis Campani and Michael Schwarting on where they may be, we had authorized them about six weeks ago to do an RFP on the flood, our flood grant that we got? That'd be great.
Absolutely, I know, I have an email scheduled to go out to Barbara because I, from the beginning of this email, to get their contact information.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Attorney Egan?
No, thank you, Mayor. I completed my report amongst your report and the other trustees. So, my only pet peeve on the, I would say, on the beach cleanup is balloons on the beach are my absolute positively boogeyman pet peeve. So, hopefully, we'll get the balloons off the beach and I'll be a happy person.
I agree, and there's great legislation happening, I know, out on the South Fork at the very least to crack down on balloon releases, which is really great. But also, I know, you know, having stayed on the South Shore at Smith Point on my 30th birthday, I went out that morning and walked the beach and had 30 balloons for my 30th birthday, which is not nice. That's not as nice as it sounds, no. So, yeah, absolutely, we're on it.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to go to Administrator Palumbo, please.
A couple of updates on some of the projects that are going on in the village. So, the LED light conversion project is ongoing. Wellsback, who is the awarded vendor, is currently installing the decorative lights in the residential communities. The streets where the vendor is actually doing the conversions are being provided to me and those streets are being uploaded to Facebook as well as the website for the residents to know what streets are being worked on. In terms of the Longfellow Drainage Project, DF Stone hopes to complete Phase 1 of this project, which is all the work inside the valley and inside the pond by the end of this week. Of course, weather permitting, Phase 2, which is the installation of a new catch basin and curbing at the top of the hill. That work is expected to take between three and five days. And of course, that's weather permitting. That's something we have to have a conversation with DF Stone as well as our engineer to see when the best time to complete this phase of the project will be. The retaining wall bids, we received seven bid proposals to rebuild the retaining walls at Highlands Boulevard and East Beach. Currently, our engineer, D&amp;B, is in the process of reviewing the bids and hopefully, they'll provide us with their analysis sooner rather than later. Just for the Board's edification, the bids did range pretty greatly between in excess of $400,000 and upwards of $2 million. In terms of other bids, so we issued a tree trimming and removal bid. Interested vendors need to submit their proposals by February 25th. And we have another bid that's going to be issued for street lighting and electrical services. That bid will be available on February 25th and interested vendors would need to submit their proposals for that bid by March 5th. And that's it.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
Denise? Broken Mouse Lady?
Yeah, nothing to report, just a...
Except the village can't afford buying a working mouse, right? Okay.
Yeah, right. Now, just getting the budget ready, we're down a person, so we're kind of going a little nuts up here, but all good.
So, I'll have something, we'll have something by Thursday, right, for the workshop?
Oh, yeah, I'm done, I'm done with that already.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just, can you do me a favor? Can you also, I'm sorry, when you circulate, send that to me first, but I'd like the Board to, I need that outline of the dates of when the, you know, when the, what our deadlines are for, you know, certifying our new budget?
Sure.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Joe, did we have a Board of Assessment Review session today?
It's happening right now.
Oh, so they're in session right now?
They are in session, I will be heading up there as soon as this meeting is over.
Okay, I'll get you up there soon. And Clerk Sakovic?
Thank you, Margot. The only thing is, nothing to report, the next public meeting is March 1st, Zoom meeting, 7:00 PM.
That's it? Okay, so, I don't believe we need to go into exec session. I want to get our budget workshop done and then perhaps we'll need to go into another exec session as a result of that. But I want to thank everybody for their hard work today. You guys are doing a great job. I know sometimes in the middle of the snowstorms, it's hard to get motivated and you got school schedules and guests arriving and, you know, COVID and, you know, some things that get in the way of our trying to operate a village business here. But you guys are doing a great job. We'll see you then in a couple of weeks, March 1st at our next public meeting. Barbara, just to, did you get any emails from anybody who wanted to maybe comment today?
I did not, I just checked.
Okay.
None yet.
Okay, so, at the March 1st meeting at 7:00 PM during the live stream session, the public will definitely be able to interface if you ever have any questions. Mayor'soffice@portjeff.com, you can always email us and we'll get back to you ASAP. Thanks, guys, have a great evening. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Who's seconding it?
Oh, motion to adjourn at 4:40?
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, good night, all.
Good night, Joe. Hi, John Boy.